So you're sure he's not coming the next few minutes?
He said he would be late. Go ahead and start without him.
Okay, don't remove.
We'll just.
Oh, here you see the agenda. If you just follow that agenda.
Good morning. I guess we'll start our meeting. The Board of Commissioners work session meeting is nine oh one, nine oh one. And today is the eleven nineteen twenty twenty-four. No, yeah. Welcome, everybody, and we'll have a roll call. Commissioner Adam is.
Yeah, I think.
Is here.
We can do that at the commission meeting. Right now, we're just in work session. We don't have to do that. Well, I guess we do.
Yeah, it says that we're supposed to do that.
You're right. I'm here.
And I'm here, and Commissioner Harvey is underway. So the item for the agenda is presentation of the San Juan County Utah Tax Commission Joseph Thomas. Oil and Gas Valuation Analysis. So do you want to take it from there, Mike?
Yes, absolutely. I appreciate the tax commission coming down today and giving us this presentation. We had received an email several months ago with the San Juan County centrally assessed. So that's what today's presentation is strictly about is centrally assessed here in San Juan County. And so I'd use this opportunity as just as commissioners and commissioner-elect. Lori Mon is here present as well, so we can just become educated on centrally assessed in San Juan County and what that looks like, what that picture is going forward. As I mentioned yesterday, there's going to be, there's potential legislation coming up and a bigger discussion with centrally assessed and how to handle this at the state. We do just, as mentioned, we do have a attorney that is kind of in cooperation with the Utah Association of Counties that helps us on our appeals. This attorney that we contract with, Thomas Sitter, he's super knowledgeable about taxes, super knowledgeable about centrally assessed. He's the one that UAC has contracted with, and we contract through UAC with him to kind of help on these appeals. So you don't see a lot of activity on his side of it. There's a lot of activity on these appeals that tend to take multiple years in appeal land as they go through courts and go through their court trials and everything to come out with a final valuation. And then we hear back on the results of that, that court decision. So with that, turn some time over to Joseph. We do have a, I don't know who's going to be presenting. Okay, so go ahead, come on up to the mic. I will go ahead and trigger your presentation. Yep, right there.
All right. Well, thanks for having us. I'm Curtis Williams from the centrally assessed group. I work, I'm senior analyst in mining. And here with me is Joseph Thomas. He's, he's an analyst from oil and gas. And then also we have Cody, tell me your last name. Cody Kemp, who's an analyst from the utilities group. And so but thanks for having us. We'll just go through this presentation. If you have any questions, though, really, we want to answer your questions. And so we don't want to take too much of your time. But so if we don't get through all of this presentation ultimately, we're really are mostly concerned about answering any of your questions. And if we get through it all, great. And if not, what we don't get through, we'll, we'll email it to you and you can certainly anytime. If you want to review it as well, you, you can and, and.
You got the whole thing.
Okay, okay. But if, at any time in the future, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us and we'd be happy to answer your questions. But we'll get started. We're just going to go through a central assessment overview, your county overview, and then we'll hit into the three different areas. We were broken up, like I said, natural resources is split into two groups, a group that assesses the mines, a group that assesses oil and gas, and then we have another group that assesses utilities and transportation companies. And then we'll, we'll actually can go do a little bit review of county manager for those that use the county manager. Gen tax, and then we have our contact information for you as well, should you have any questions for us or need assistance in the future. Just looking at the central assessment overview, obviously, we assess, the things that we assess different from the locally assessed property. Locally assessed, they're assessing residential, business, and industrial properties here in your county. And then we're assessing, as I've stated, the mining properties, oil and gas properties, and then utility and transportation properties. And included in the mining properties generally is some land that, some patented mining claims that are, may not be used for mining right now at this time. Then here's the three different areas that, and here's some of the industries that we, we assess. The many different kinds of mines that we assess in mining metals, non-metals, coal, sand and gravel, uranium properties, and then, like I said, mining claims. And then they have both some oil and gas gathering properties and oil and gas production here in your county. And then here are some of the industries assessed by the, by the utilities group. You can see, we'll talk later. I don't know how much value there is in any air charter or air charter services, but there's been some changes to the laws there. And so those will be discussed later. I, I don't know, I don't recall off the top of my head how much value there was here for your county for any air charter services. There may not be much, so there may not be maybe little to no impact there with the new laws that have been passed. Okay, yep.
Tell us what, what oil gathering is.
Well, oil, oil gathering, oftentimes you'll have the production systems are oftentimes, you know, pumping it out of the ground. Some of the lines that carry it to a gas plant or a processing plant will be some of the gathering systems.
It's the pipelines.
Yeah.
Running from the well.
Well, and then, then, yeah, from the well to, to a gas plant or whatnot. And sometimes they're owned by the folks that are also pumping it out of the ground. And sometimes they're owned by a separate company. And then you have pipelines that are taking it, that are assessed by the utilities group that beyond the plant are taking it to an oil refinery or to a, even to the customers where it can then be used. So some of those big pipelines are, are assessed by the utilities group.
Those can be above ground or below ground, both, right?
Possibly, yeah, yeah. Okay. Just as the county is assessing property, we're trying to arrive at fair market value. And we probably have the same definition of fair market value as the county is, is adhering to and they're valuing their properties as well. There are some, while we are governed by the Utah Tax Code fifty-nine-two-two-oh-one, is most of our centrally assessed property. Then there's specific rules in tax code that we're governed by. Rule seven is for mining properties, rule ten for oil and gas, and then rule sixty-two is for the unitary property valuation, which is utilities and transportation.
Does rule sixty-two play into solar and wind power?
I'm not, if, if they are valuing those companies, it would, it would have an impact if those are being valued as a, under unitary properties guidelines. Yeah. Here's just a kind of our calendar for the year. And I'll point out some key dates too for the counties too. On January first every year, we, we notify all of our taxpayers that they can, anytime after January first, there, they can start filing their returns. Those are due by March first each year. They can request up to thirty days of extension. So oftentimes we're getting returns generally before or by March first, or if they've requested extensions up to the end of March or, or April first, depending on when those days fall. A key date for the county is we've always, we ask county treasurers to sometime after January, maybe by February, February seventh is the date. I don't know if it's, it has to be done by that date. But any of our centrally assessed accounts that have prior year's taxes owing, they can go into the gen tax county manager system and mark those accounts delinquent. And when we send out our notices to those taxpayers, it, the notice will say that they, it will tell them their value for the year when we work that up by May first. But also if they've been flagged as delinquent, it will also let them know that they have prior year's taxes owing, and they should reach out to the county treasurer. So.
Can a company or a a property, do they, can they appeal something that that was in a prior year, maybe even five years back or, or six years back? How far back can they go?
They can only appeal the current year.
Okay.
Okay, and, and that is one thing. We send out our notices on May first. They have ninety days to appeal that year.
And if they don't appeal that year, they can't appeal next year for that same property?
Well, not the next year, but they can't appeal. No, they could appeal the next year. It's just, it's just each year they, they are, they have the rights to appeal their valuation on that property. What they can't do is they can't, in that ninety day window, they can, they're, they can only appeal that year. They can't appeal any prior years if they missed out on appealing any prior years. Yeah, yeah. So they, they can file an appeal. They have until August first from May first with that ninety days. The county, if, if a company assess or appeals, like the county has a window, a sixty day window to cross appeal. It's not sixty days after August first. It's sixty days after the company files their appeal. So if the, if a company, while they have until August first, if they file it by May fifteenth, two weeks into that ninety day window, the county would have sixty days from that time to file a cross appeal.
The county's window doesn't fall within the same window as the company.
Right, right.
Company wanted to wait until the very last day to appeal. That doesn't exclude the county's ability.
That's right. So, yeah, if they, if they don't file a pill, and we do have many come in on the last day. And so then that gives the county sixty days beyond that. So, yeah. And then a couple of key times too, we do get out our assessments to the taxpayers on May first. That's also when we have our valuations in the county manager for the counties to look at. And that's, it's in the, what's called the preliminary county book. And then we usually finalize our values. Sometimes there's no changes and sometimes there's a couple minor changes between that. And right around May twenty-first is when we finalize the county book. So let's see.
So do those go to the treasurer or the assessor on notification of an appeal?
I think it's supposed to go to the county auditor, the notification. I, I believe the, the appeal states that they're not only supposed to file it with the tax commission, with the, with the appeals division. I think they're also supposed to send a letter to the county auditor as well. And I will say, I think the big companies who know what they're doing, they probably are good about that. Some of the smaller guys, I think we found that they may not always contact, they may not always send a letter to the county auditor as well, even though that's in the law and instructions, yeah. Just looking at that, there's some other dates in there, some things that I, I don't know if there's any rel in your, but there's some rel car items that, that take place. Rel, I, I don't know if there's any rel in your railroads in your county, so that may not be critical here. All right. Okay, just looking at the San Juan County overview of our centrally assessed information for this past year. Here we've got a couple of graphs. The first one shows statewide, the statewide property tax total centrally assessed makes up about five percent of the statewide total. And you can see how that's broken up between the green is natural resources and the blue is utilities. It's almost fifty, you know, it's forty-six and fifty-four percent. But then for your county, we make a bigger piece of that pie. Centralizedness makes up twenty-six percent of your overall property tax base. With natural resources making up sixty percent and of that piece and utilities forty percent. Let's see, let's, here's, here's what's happened in the last ten years. The one side is statewide with the top two pieces being natural resources and utilities. And the percentages have dropped in the last ten years of what we're, what percentage of your overall tax, property tax base we're making up.
So tell me if I'm interpreting this right. In two thousand fourteen, forty-eight percent of our, of our tax was on natural resources.
Yeah.
With about thirty-six on private property or homeowners or whatever. But because of appeals, you go to twenty twenty-four, we've shifted the load from natural resources now is sixteen percent and private property is sixty-five. Is that, am I reading that right?
That is correct. It's probably not, maybe some appeals, but probably not necessarily due to appeals. It could be due to I'm not, I'm not sure. In those early years, you know, it's probably a lot of oil and gas value. And if prices have come down over the years or not gone up, or there hasn't been more investment like there was back then, those assets have been declining. And then also in those two oldest years, I think there was probably still some higher uranium properties, and those have since dropped, dropped down probably significant due to those mines having been shut down and their assets declining until they decide to open them back up and put more investments. So for the natural resources, I'd say it's probably, I don't know if we've had any big appeals that would have decreased it that much, but it's probably been more due to
We've had some big appeals.
Okay, okay, but.
I would almost certainly bet.
That they've had some impact.
To the private property owner.
Okay.
Is due to the number of appeals and the amount of the appeal.
Oh, uh-huh, uh-huh, yeah.
I would say also, just in preparing this slide, I did notice like the residential values over that time period have more than doubled.
That's true.
And I think that our properties, essentially assessed properties just aren't keeping up with that level of growth.
Oh, okay. Our next slide too, actually.
Are you the ones that, that valued the, the centrally assessed or do we?
We value the centrally assessed.
You valued, so if, if, if you're not keeping it up, keeping up, we can blame it on you?
The, and then you can see utilities, looks like they kind of ballooned a little bit in there and then have come back down. But they haven't changed as much as natural resources, I guess, here.
It's electric cars.
Okay, okay. Now, one thing too, is the orange personal property, although your personal property's been pretty high. Like just here in the last couple of years for utilities, they're shrunk here in the last couple of years some because they lost the telecoms. Those are now a part, part of its locally assessed and part of its, part of personal property. So.
What was it that we lost?
Telecoms is no longer centrally assessed.
Oh, it is?
No.
So like your Comcast.
Broadband and fiber and stuff we're putting in all over the state of Utah. It's not centrally assessed.
That's right. And part of it became any improvements in land that were part of the central assessment of telecoms is now locally assessed. Any personal property owned and operated by those telecom companies is assessed as a personal property. So that now falls in, in the personal property bucket. So they lost a little bit of that value. At least I've seen here in the last couple of years, some of that decrease for utilities was, was due to that telecom shifting to other buckets, I guess.
Shifted from there to, to personal property.
Personal and local, yeah, yeah.
Drive the personal property.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
How do you determine what's on, I mean, how do you determine that telecom on a personal property level? I mean,
Well.
Who, how, how do you know who has what?
Well, it's, they're required to, there's, there's another group now that's not, I forget the name of the group. MCAT. They, all these telecoms were reporting to us previously. They are now required to report all of their personal property to this MCAT group, and they value that personal property every year.
And is MCAT our local or is it a?
No, it's a nether, I, it's not part of our centrally assessed group. It's a, but it is a kind of a, it is a statewide group, yeah.
I think it stands for multi-county assessing team.
Yeah.
Jill, what's her name oversees that for UAC?
And so. Yeah, and just the personal property, like I said, if they own any improvements or land here in the county, that would just get picked up by your, by, locally by, by Rick, yeah. So.
So MCAT reports to our assessor?
That's right. Or I guess that's right. I, okay. And they get their stuff in late in the year, don't they? I mean, for example, I could be understanding this wrong. I don't want to get off, but my understanding is when they get their personal property, and it's not when you guys are getting your personal property stuff in.
So, yeah, so personal property under, under this is, if that's.
Under MCAT.
Report to us until May the fifteenth.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is when their deadline's supposed to be. It's kind of a convoluted system because it's in its infancy.
Okay.
This didn't change until twenty-three.
Okay, that's right, yeah.
And MCAT picked up, but it's kind of a convoluted system because the way that it works is the telecoms will report all their, and it's confusing. They don't even know what they're doing sometimes. Some of them report to us, and then we're supposed to forward it to MCAT. Some of them report direct to MCAT. MCAT's got a group of people, two or three people that are doing the work for all the counties. And they're reviewing the asset list, and then they're determining the values. And then they send the billing to the, to the telecoms, and then the telecoms send us a check. And then what we're supposed to do is go out in the field, if you've got the time, verify that the assets that are being reported are actually there. And if you find any differences, then we're supposed to notify MCAT. MCAT does a modification. It's just this.
So I think Jill Brown runs MCAT at UAC. And, and so Lori, if you want to.
M-C-A-T?
M-C-A-T. And it's Jill Brown at UAC that, that runs that program for, for MCAT.
Didn't UAC start that group?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
For this very purpose, and so.
Why did they pull that away? Was it just more beneficial to the counties to pull it away than from centrally assessed or? I mean, they took that on. There's got to be a reason why they took that on.
Legislation.
Oh, okay.
By the telecom companies.
Thank you.
I'll just jump to this next slide. This next slide shows that same slide, I guess, on, for the county stuff, but then it actually puts some dollars here as well. Like I said, you can, so you can see the, where before you were seeing percentages, you can also match those up to, to actual dollars there.
Natural resources went from four sixty-nine to one seventy-nine.
Yeah, and you can see how much of a drop there was. I mean, on the percentage even, it, the biggest drop probably happened the first year, and then it's still slightly declining. Then it's probably been holding steady or for the last handful of years or, or been fairly close, jumped up and down a little bit. But yeah, that initial decline was those first few years. All right. Also, you can see a big increase there in personal property and probably matches maybe some of the loss from utilities maybe there as well in the last year or two. And that's some of that telecom value dropping from utilities and moving to personal property. And maybe a little bit real property, but probably mostly personal property. All right. Some of the.
I got a question about the natural resources.
Oh, yeah.
Can we go back?
Let's go back.
There we go, okay, yeah.
So the top number is twenty fourteen. So I just look in the decline of our natural resources. Is that because we keep losing land and losing? Is that because we just, because, you know, a few years ago, maybe, thirty years ago, we had lots of oil being harvested in our county. We had all kinds of different things going on, but we are just limited. Shrinking and, and we can see the effect and the numbers.
Yeah. I, you know, that, that biggest drop that happens in that first year, ten years ago, I don't know if I could say exactly without looking back through all of our records, what, what specifically it was. I'm not sure if it was some appeals or if there was a, you know, I, I suspect there may have been. Still, I know there was a time when we had a couple of years, since I've started seventeen or eighteen years ago, there were a couple of years where sometimes the price of uranium would spike up and you'd get some new companies coming in and investing into the uranium mines, thinking that it was going to get going again. And then it would drop, the price would drop out. And so then their value, not mining after all would drop out rather quickly. I don't know if some of it was uranium, but then also I don't know if that tenth year out was a, was a banner year for oil and gas as well. If the prices were really high, they could have been investing a lot in the oil and gas field and then have not invested as much since then and.
Well, we have more drillings. So I'm sure that had to affect the numbers when we don't have them now.
Yeah. And, and for our valuations, we'll do them on a, we'll value them on based on how much money they can make. And, and so based on pricing. And so sometimes for the, we're not only assessing land and personal property and equipments, but then we assess a mineral value of if it's a profitable organization and, and they can make a lot of money by selling the oil and gas based on that future price, what that future forecasted price or what the current price is. That could make the value of their properties even more than just simply the assets alone or the, but. So I, I don't know if there, like I said, if there was a big appeal that dropped that, or if it was, that was a banner year in, if the price that in twenty fourteen of oil or gas had spiked up. But we, we see that sometimes from some years, a few years ago, for example. And I'm not seeing that here, but I know in Carbon and Emery County where they do have a lot of natural gas, one year the natural gas price more than doubled. And so those properties, the value of them jumped up considerably, but then it, after just two years, it dropped back down to where it had been. And so two years later, that value all dropped back down based on our valuations. So oftentimes, sometimes it's, it's mineral pricing that factors into our values. Um, so oftentimes, uh, sometimes it's it's, uh, mineral pricing, uh, that that factors into our values that has a big, a big impact sometime.
Total decline, there's not a zigzagging up and down, it's just a total decline.
Yeah, uh, yeah, that first year was probably the biggest decline. It has come down, it looks like, still for a few more years after that. Uh, but but, uh, I I don't know exactly what what that was usually, um. Most of our stuff we've we've been focusing on after this, we'll we'll focus more on five years and so. But, uh, ten years out, I'm not sure exactly what what the, what caused the big drop there for those oldest years out. But I I, uh, just kind of remembering, I feel like it may have been a little bit of uranium pricing and new investment in those mines. But also it could have also been, uh, some oil and gas, uh, pricing as well that was up at the time.
Thank you.
Okay.
So do these numbers reflect the appeals that have have won?
Uh, I don't know if these do reflect, uh, any appealed values that were pulled out of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
Last year, going back to twenty-eighteen with the adjustments going forward.
Yeah, I don't know that this, the, uh, appeals are reflected in these values, yeah. I can check that out too, I can, um. I can try and see where where those values at were by by industry. Like I said, we've been in a new system, but I can go back to some paper files and get back to you on how. What those older decreases were. We've been in a new system since twenty-seventeen or twenty-sixteen. But those older years, we could probably, I could look at the old paper files and see where where that value was at and what might have been the cause of those. Those oldest couple of years decreasing so much.
Because when we see the the light blue and the personal property, real property. Those numbers are going up.
Yeah, yeah.
Except for one time, you know, there were some where, was a correction or whatever, but. Anyway, I was just curious about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, just some of the differences in in, uh, centrally assessed and locally assessed. Where oftentimes to value our properties, while we do value, uh, the assets individually, uh, uh. To value them as a unit, um, of operation, oftentimes we're looking at international markets and that, that's where pricing of. Of, uh, natural resources materials comes into play. And then also, um, whereas locally assessed oftentimes, especially for residential or commercial, it's a much more local market. Um, sometimes the international supply and demand will will change that pricing or different, uh, international, uh, factors will affect greatly affect. Some of those prices for oil and gas and and others. Um, some some long-term trends, uh. Uh, well, we as from that slide, we've seen that, uh, and we see this in all county strout, but the real property values are are rapidly increasing. Um, there has been some lit- litigation, legislation, I should say. Um, where affecting our valuation of airco- airlines and telecoms and then also, uh. The way they have to unvalue, uh, or remove intangibles from any valuations and how to value those properly. And then, um, litigation is always a big factor on how we we value properties as well. Especially for for many of the utility properties. Um, just here in recent years, and while some of these decreases happened a couple of years ago, um. Sometimes the the way, uh, interest rates have been changing here in recent years, um, affect our, the way we va- value as well. Um. Uh, the higher interest rates will usually result in a higher cap rate and and therefore. Lower values or a lower interest rates. We usually also have, uh, lower capitalization rates and so our values are higher and so.
Let me just tell you what.
Yeah.
My analysis is I've only been here twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Every time a centrally assessed property appeals to the state tax commission, they win. I've never seen the counties win that.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me why that is.
Well, um, there's some very complex issues going on, especially, like I said, usually some of the biggest ones are are utilities.
Right.
Um, and there's been some oil and gas and some mining and usually, wh- you know, we're vigorously fighting those. Um, and oftentimes, uh, they will win something, but rarely do they get everything that they're asking. But they usually are, do get a win on some point of value, so that results in a lower value.
County loses that appeal.
Yeah.
Then in order to collect the same amount of tax we collected last year.
Yeah.
Which is mandated, that we do that.
Mm-hmm.
Then the shift goes to the private property owner.
Yeah, yeah.
And even though you, you know, the housing prices are going up, that still has an effect on the private property owner. From the centrally assessed property who. Who appeals and and wins.
Yeah, yeah. And and like I said, they, uh, you know, that that is, uh. Cause sometimes they will go to the commission and then o- oftentimes even beyond the commission to sometimes district court for some of those that last years and years. And while, uh, they they may, they they oftentimes do win something of theirs, they certainly, they rare, uh, you know, they're never getting. Probably anywhere near what they were asking in most of those cases, um.
Is John Valentine still the?
He is the the head commissioner, yeah.
On the same dormitory floor as I was as a freshman.
Oh, uh-huh.
And I tried to get him to lean a little more towards the county.
Yeah, yeah.
But he hasn't been very cooperative.
Well, and I will tell you, um, there was a, there was an old attorney that. Moved over to Salt Lake County and prior commissions, prior to Commissioner Valentine. Um, he had been the attorney representing the centrally assessed group for many years and had never won a case. And the commissioners thought so highly of him and thought he had great case and didn't realize he'd never won. But with Commissioner Valentine, he's been, uh, he he, I feel like he's really, he and the other commissioners that are there with him now. Uh, while, you know, the companies still sometimes get some wins, they they certainly aren't getting anywhere near to what they're asking in most cases. And we feel like they've had a great understanding and actually given us a few wins, uh. Where, like I said, years ago, this one attorney never did get a single win at the commission, so. Uh, but we feel like this commission has, uh, done a great job, uh, hearing our cases and sometimes we don't agree with all their decisions, but. But, uh, they, I feel like they've done as well as any commission ever in understanding our assessments, really.
Senator for so many years, I mean, Speaker of the House.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
For a long time and. So he has a, he has a good background in in taxation, so I don't know.
Yeah. Um. We'll just hop over here. This was just an explanation of of our valuations. Like I said, we do value the assets, but then we also do an overall, what's called an income valuation where. Um, we take the income of an operating property and divide it by what we call our cap rate to come up with their value. And that usually is even greater than just simply the independent assets, like the value of the personal property or improvements or land on their own. And so, um. That's where higher interest rates have impacted our our rate, uh, dividing by just a larger number, result in a lower value. But if we see rates come down, uh, that that generally results in a in a higher value as well. So that's been something that we've been dealing with in the last few years as well.
How do you value, cause I know just the Pacific Core argument.
Oh, uh-huh.
You had them arguing, you know, that their infrastructure was deteriorating and get aging out.
Oh, uh-huh, yeah.
Whereas like for us, we take on a building itself, the the lifetime of a building, twenty-five years. Um, is there that same methodology on their, on the infrastructure? Cause that was, one of their arguments was the infrastructure was aging out and so because of that, we needed to decrease centrally assessed. Their productivity, um, less demand, whatever the case is, they were able to argue that point as well.
Mm-hmm.
And so there's like, mm, all of these factors that go in into that valuation, but yet. Your personal property.
Yeah.
I I can't tell you that my house is depreciated because it's older than twenty-five years.
Right, right.
That same argument that we get, that centrally assessed get to have.
Yeah.
You know, I I can't tell you that cost of productivity or anything, that's not a a factor.
I'll I'll let Cody explain more of the utility properties when we get there, but but for.
I can tell you about a mine, we do value like personal property, we generally value just like the personal property is assessed locally. Um, and then the land, we usually try and value a surface portion of land that's that they're actively mining. And we'll usually just try and match the local values. But then it's this overarching income valuation we do of of a mine. And if it's a good operating mine, that value will exceed the base value of the the land. And the, uh, equipment that they're using, um, and that's, uh. That additional amount is called allocated income and what what that represents is an assemblage of of the assets. Um, that additional enhanced value from, uh, and then also it also is a mineral, uh, a mineral value as well within there. And oftentimes when our values are decreasing, sometimes it may be because they're getting rid of equipment, but it's not because we're valuing. An improvement necessarily or or the land or the personal property differently than county, but it's because. This overarching income value that we value on a mine based on their income producing ability. Because it's been lessened because they're either selling less material or, uh.
Or they had to buy a new building and.
Pa- possibly.
Their company so they have less of a, an income to show.
Possibly, yeah.
So they offset it by assets or?
Yeah, that 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 could be, so, yeah, it's not, usually it's not that their their assets are less than what they would be locally assessed or. Or that they're less on our books, but it's usually that income value that's, that might be less because they had a year where they had more expenses than. Than maybe in prior years or something, so.
May- maybe we could go to the legislature and. Get them to give a senior citizen discount on property.
You do have the abatement side of it, seniors get to have, but yet it just.
John's a senior citizen, I know he is.
It just seems like there's this, it's polar opposites for the homeowner.
Mm-hmm.
I I get my market value and that's all I can go off of, I can I can pull appraisal comps.
Yeah.
You know, to to come in and argue the assessed value. But really that's it, my age and my house doesn't matter if it's, you know, it should be falling apart because it's older than twenty-five years, I don't get that argument. I don't get the argument of income, you know, that I can hide. And so it just seems like for the homeowner, it's. It's built to continue to increase and for essentially assessed, it's structurally built that they can argue their way out of the tax.
Hmm, hmm, yeah.
And so that's kind of, for me, that's why you see that shift is, and you know, P- Pacific Core, you, we didn't see any layoffs.
Mm-hmm.
In the company, so they weren't hurting.
Yeah.
You seen them actually growing across the world.
Yeah, their income isn't going down.
But yet, you know, they, if they go off of, well, this is my cost per barrel of oil or whatever it is. I can argue that and I can tuck my assets showing high losses.
Mm-hmm.
It just seems like it's. It's less favorable on the citizens themselves on the tax burden.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll we'll get in, like I said, we'll, I'll, we'll ta- talk a little bit more too about, like, I know Cody will cover some of. Some of those questions too, when he talks about the utilities and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about mining here too. This is just more of some of the, you know, the, both interest rates and and any pricing, uh, especially for oil and gas having a. Having a real, real impact on those property values. Okay, here's, here's the last five years, I think you saw that in the ten years, but here's what's been going on for the last five years with natural resources and utilities. And so nat- uh, utili- natural resource continued to drop a little bit, uh, drop some in these last five years. Not as much as those older five years and then utilities has been up and down a little bit, but fairly steady. Here's the biggest industries, I guess, uh, centrally assessed industries in your county. Oil and gas production, electric utility, uranium, that's, uh, probably, uh, while there are some mines, it's probably most, most of that value is probably in the plant. And then, uh, liquid pipeline and gas pipelines, those are both utility companies, I mean, utility, uh, pipelines. Then we have, uh, some mining after that as well. And some others, what they get on smaller down there.
So on the centrally assessed land, so if if Rick and his team.
Yeah.
Assess land at X value or is that, are those land values attributed, are they straight equal across the board for centrally assessed?
We, we have put in, we had not updated our values in a few years prior to this last year. We now, uh, w- we now on a yearly basis from all the counties starting last year now get a map with their values for land. Um, and last year we reviewed that and where we have centrally assessed land. Um, and this is not, not the utility land, but this is a mining land, I guess.
Okay.
Or these patented mining claims that may not be, that that may not be part of a mine right now or may may never have been. Those are centrally assessed, we, uh, we're ju- we usually just looked at what the county values were in that area and then tried to come up with a value that's. Uh, very similar to what the, what the local assessed values are. So I guess that's, a- and the land only, some of that, uh, it, while it says land only, it's, uh, some of that could be mined. And it just may not be owned by the mine operator, but it's, uh, leased to the mine operator. And then some of it may be some of these panned in my, uh. Uh, panned in mining claims that aren't being mined right now, but historically have been assessed centrally.
So they don't get a green belt or anything like that?
No, we don't, n- uh, don't, we don't give green belt, so.
I just wanna make sure that they're equal.
Yeah. Okay. Here's, uh, just in the last two years, here's the largest, uh, companies, uh, uh, largest ten companies, uh. And you can see there's been a little bit of change, but overall probably some of the same ones are there from year to year.
So I. Oh, okay. E F R E- Energy Fuels, uh. At White Mesa, the fourth one down, that's Energy Fuels.
Uh, yeah, the White Mesa, um, yeah, I believe so, yeah. Okay, um. Let's see what else. Here's the note, the biggest increases or decreases in the last two years. Uh, Mid-America Pipeline and and Elk Operating Service were the two and Pacific Core there.
And all three of those, that Mid-America Elk Operating, Pacific Core are all under appeal. Right now, they go back years.
Say which ones were again?
The Mid-America Elk Petroleum and Pacific Core.
How long?
Pacific Core's been twenty-eighteen. So we just entered in a contract with Peter for the Mid-America appeal.
And there there are slides later on that go.
That show the timeline.
We'll show, we'll show the open appeals there. That, I don't, we probably should have taken that one out, that, we do, uh, we do place a value on state trust lands that are. Tied to a mine, but ultimately that value is, so we must have added some state land to a mine, whether they were expanding or onto a new area. Uh, we we place a value on that, but ultimately that's, uh, that's exempt, that's all.
So can I ask one quick question on that Pacific Core? So when they filed that appeal, is that for that year and that appeal is still continuing? Or is it appeal and appeal and appeal and appeal?
Yes, both of those, so.
U- usually once they file an appeal, if it's not settled before the next year, they'll continue to appeal every year after that until it gets settled. And then those, those next years are probably contingent upon.
And then those, those next years are probably contingent upon that per- sometimes they'll get thrown in and sometimes they'll just. Say, we're just gonna hold off on these until that first year is, uh, settled and then they'll.
So do they look at it when it's reviewed, do they look at it as a whole or do they look at each appeal individually?
Well, it's, sometimes it depends.
Typically, and I believe, uh, Pacific Core, I believe has been involved recently, um, I believe they settled that. So we did. Typically the way it works is, um, the sides will pick a year, they stack up because it's such a slow process, you just get year after year stacking up. The two sides will determine which year they want to take and have heard. And then I think the goal is to, to get a decision in that year and try to apply that to, to settle the other years that are open. It doesn't always work that way, but I think that's typically the goal. Sometimes they'll try to book in and they can hear the year and, and a later year.
Sure.
To get decisions and try to resolve the other ones, but they are heard typically separately.
So my last thing, when they're appealing those, do they, they obviously still have to pay that centrally assessed, but with what your determination is. Even though then they may have a revision on that determination.
Right, so in most cases they, they pay that amount that we determined and then if they win an appeal, then a refund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So here are some of the natural resource appeals that are currently open. Uh, we don't have any from prior years, but, uh, these three are all just from this year. Um, I'm looking at the screen up here. I'm not seeing what the value is at risk or that they've asked for on the elk. Okay.
If you click on that, you can move that little window out of the way.
Oh, it's here?
Yeah, just click and drag it.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so yeah, that's, that's the biggest one. Um.
That forty four million dollar impact, that's huge.
Sure, sure. And like I said, oftentimes what they ask for and what, what they either win or get stipulated to is significantly different.
Yeah.
But still, uh, any.
Kind of like you had mentioned, and it's a good thing just to know is.
Yeah.
They pay what you assess in twenty twenty four. And so if it continues five years forward, you know, then we have to, if. They're awarded and, and when their appeal, um, then we've got to back pay. That amount that was originally assessed that they paid for. So we've got to. Plus interest sometimes on those appeals and so, um, that's where that hurts the counties because all of a sudden. You know, like Pacific Core, we're paying the twenty eighteen appeal in twenty twenty four. And we've got to go back and now basically pay them back those taxes that they paid. And so, and the hard part for us in all counties, we're the same situation is. There's not a piggy bank that we're putting money in and setting it aside, waiting for these appeals to come out. And so. That's where they, they kind of, with the legislation, they, we have, um, the tax stabilization fund. Here that we bank a bunch of money in that took, um, a vote. Of the population to open in and get access to that account. Um, I think last year they were able to change legislation where on some of these appeals, we could use the tax stabilization fund. Um, to, to recover from this, cause if you've got to pay, I mean, if the county's value is seventy five and they're saying that's forty four. If they're given that forty four, then that's millions of dollars that we have to pay back in back tax.
Is, is that what that says original is seventy five? And it's going to be reduced to forty four?
That's the potential.
It's going to be reduced by forty four?
Reduced by forty four, but that's what they're, yeah, that's what they're asking, yes.
Thirty million.
Yeah.
So the, the impact is reduce the value by forty four million?
That's right. That's what, that's what this is saying, yeah. And then there's the two others which are, are significantly smaller, but those are, one's the, a water injection company. And then the other one is actually one of our land only accounts that we, like I said, we revalued this year and they're, then they.
We can't just give them credit for an upcoming year then? Tell them they, we give you a credit in twenty twenty five.
And it's on a term, or it's on a term?
Yeah, and that's the hard, the hard part is it affects the whole. Collection group, so school districts, you know, health district, it affects all of that by, uh, just the county.
So the school district takes the biggest hit. She's the school board president.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, I mean, I'm sure, I don't, I don't know what's going on with that, that one in particular, uh, being in oil and gas, but. I'm sure we're fighting against that and, you know, maybe there's a reason for so, some reduction. I, I'm not sure, but I, I can't imagine this, this much. I'm not sure.
Yeah, uh, I'm not the analyst over that company, um, but I know that. Uh, kind of JJ, the manager, he kind of mentioned to me, I think a lot of it has to do with just the, the pricing coming down. And the company is thinking that it's affecting the price more than, than what the earth thing is, it affects the, the, the value. Um, but I guess for a few more kind of more specific reasoning, we need to kind of reach out to JJ.
Yeah.
Or Steve, who's the analyst that's, that's over the company, he's the, he's the one that kind of did evaluation for them. Um, and we do have their contact information in the area, but their names and their, their phone number and email. And they'll be able to get back to you and, you know.
Yeah, we, with that big result, we.
Is an Abajo Nation oil and gas.
Oh, uh-huh.
It is, yeah.
We could definitely have a, have the manager or, or, uh, over oil and gas get back with you too on. On some of the reasoning for that and when they, they think there's, and where they're thinking, you know, what they're thinking is, I'm sure. They don't agree with it at all, uh, that big of a drop. Uh, you know, sometimes there is a legitimate reason for some minor drops or something, you know, wh- whether, but. Usually that kind of a drop where we're never, you know, that's quite a stretch we feel like for the companies. To request that kind of a drop. All right, we'll see. Uh, thanks. I think we've got some. Let's see, okay, just the, well, and here's the. The one, the one, I guess, but many years stacked up for Mid America Pipeline here. You can see where it's been stacked up for twenty seventeen through twenty four, where they just, every year thereafter.
So this is just the, this is just the number for that potential impact. Are you assuming that if it was settled, it would still be that?
That's the worst case scenario.
Yeah.
That's if, if they got every point that they were trying to make, if the judge agreed with them one hundred percent.
Yeah.
Agree with us at all, that's the number they won't get and that typically is not going to happen.
Now this now, is this numbered a San Juan County number or across the whole assessed? This is just San Juan County number?
You add up all of those, all of those years. And this is a case where we actually have heard of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen were, or. Uh, a year or so ago. Um, I don't think either side was happy with, with the decision in that. So this was a case where they weren't comfortable applying what was decided in that year. Uh, to future years. Uh, there were recently some, some proceedings with the tax commission, uh, the taxpayer had asked them to make some decisions on certain points regarding. Things like deferred income tax and growth. Um, and the commission decided they want part of it and disagreed on the other part. So now it's set to go to a commission. They're, they're going to set a commission hearing to, to further discuss the appeals.
Thanks.
All right.
Twenty seventeen, so it holds twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, all the way up to twenty twenty four.
If they disagree with our methodology for one year, they're just going to feel every, regardless of what the value is, they're going to keep appealing until that issue that they have is resolved.
So the Pacific Core one, that adjusted, and that's why I asked that question, is this reflective of the Pacific Core decision? As it adjusts that, um, back on the, the bar charts, is, is it? Adjust that valuation? That's why I asked that question is.
Right.
From that decision, did those all consecutive years also change on there? Because that was a costly.
I don't know if our bar charts do reflect appeals, I mean. Stipulated appeals, I feel like it's just probably original assessment.
Certainly those decisions can affect future values, depending on what those decisions are, um, if we, it's. Those court decisions kind of give us guidance how we have to proceed in the future in certain cases.
Yeah.
You know, so if we lose a point where we think we should be adding growth and, and the court's determined, no, in this case you shouldn't be adding growth and going forward, we're not going to have growth. You know, we can be, no, it's going to result in back and forth and we'll lose, so. So they certainly can have, uh, consequences for future years, um, in that, in that way.
So I have a question. When you talk about that, that commission, you're talking about the tax commission?
That, that's right. Well, I mean, uh, cause while we work at the state tax commission, come up with the values. If it gets appealed, it first gets appealed to, there's an administrative law judge and the commissioners that will decide.
So which side are you? Are you on the county side or are you?
Oh, well, we're, we're usually, we're usually fighting for our value, so, yes.
Really, I just wonder if we, um. If you're the messenger and just educating us and then we're the one that, maybe making a heart for you.
Yeah.
We wanted you guys to feel like we're friendly.
Well, and.
But if we have, of course, the commission, Adam, nobody ever have won anything. Is that what you said? So it might kind of like the little girl asked the question about the king suit. So what is the point? And we just keep, are we using money to fight these things? Are we using money to fight that?
Well, well, and like I said, yeah, we, usually the county will join, especially the larger, the larger cases, they'll join and, and while. We may lose, we're usually not losing anywhere near what the company is, is fighting for. So we are, we. Ultimately, we're not keeping our full value, but we're usually not coming down to what they are really, we, we may lose on some points, but. Ultimately, uh, if, if we gave into everything they, you know, yeah.
Um, first I wanted to know if you guys are on our side or.
Yeah. You know, and technically we're not supposed to say we're on anybody's side. We're really just, we're, we're, we're fighting for our value because if we feel our values right. You know, if we feel our.
Look at these millions and millions of dollars.
Sure, mm-hmm, yeah.
Of course, wouldn't it be nice for San Juan County to get some of the money because.
Yeah.
Um, we are doing not good.
Yeah.
And so, but it, if it's worth the fight, it's worth the money, but.
Yeah.
We wouldn't get all of, they're, they're talking value.
Yeah, value.
We wouldn't get all that money back to San Juan County because then it goes through the formula. By which it's taxed and it may only be a percentage.
Okay.
Of what, of what they're, they're asking. So it's not like this county's losing two hundred million dollars.
No, I understand that, so.
The tax on that is much less and, and be, and then. The big loser is the school district.
And while this is, this potential here, that's everything they're asking for. Generally, you know, most cases, we may lose some of that, but we're fighting for our, our original value when. We, we win on many points as well, so that, uh, rarely does the taxpayer ever get what they're totally asking for. So they. Some may be lost, but hopefully nowhere near all that they're asking for.
Reduction, pretty much on every seat.
We have had an occasional case where there's no reduction at all, but usually it seems like. That would be a district quarter, the, uh, the commissioners or the, the law judge at the commission. Do find at some point that they may agree with the company on, and so it may result in some slight reduction, yeah.
Thank you.
But I, I would say, yeah, it is, it is worth the fight. Like I said, we, not only do we, we fight it, but oftentimes, uh, the county joining it, you know. Um, especially, I'm guessing Mid America Pipeline is probably multiple counties. And so oftentimes when there's multiple counties involved, they'll also bring in some experts and those experts greatly helping the case as well. Uh, in fighting for, for our value or for, to keep the value up where, where we've been valuing it at. Let's see. Just jumping, uh, we'll get into natural resource. We've been going an hour. I don't know if you want us to keep going to finish this out or.
Keep on going, half two hours.
Okay, okay.
We only have an hour, yeah.
We, yeah. Uh, you know what? Let me go through mining and then I'll turn it over to you for oil and gas if that sounds good. Oh, is it getting into, okay. This is kind of natural resource altogether. Like I said, this is where we do, we didn't generally do. Through, we could potentially do three type of valuations, a market value, which is usually looking and seeing if we had. We rarely do a market value analysis in that we don't see mining properties or oil and gas. Specific properties selling very often. Oftentimes a whole company will be bought. Um, so there's not good comparables, whereas that's, that's some of the difference too with. Home, uh, homes being sold, oftentimes you have a lot of home sales and so you, most of those, uh. Value changes are usually based on market studies of, uh, what, what houses are selling for. And then we do a cost analysis, we'll use, uh. We value our personal property for natural resources, the same way that the local personal properties, as we use the same rule thirty three. Uh, depreciation tables every year. Will value improvements using different methods, sometimes based on cost of building it, uh, reported and then. We may, uh, revalue them using some Marshall and Swift methods. And then, uh, I talked about how we value land, oftentimes we're ju- we're looking, uh, at locally assessed land. That's, uh, similar in, or, or around the land that we assessed to see where we should come in at that. And then for, for our cost analysis, we're just taking the total of all of those. Then it's the income, we will do. Uh, an income evaluation of what a, for example, a mine, what a mine will make or what an oil and gas well will make, depending on. How much they're pumping out of the ground and what pricing of the minerals that they sell is, uh, currently, or what it's expected to be in the near future. Um, we'll, we'll use a capitalized net revenue, that's the C N R for long life properties or D C F. A discounted cash flow for short mine life and then. They use a program called, uh, R three program for oil and gas production where it values the, a well based on. Um, how much it's expected to pump out of the ground into the future and, and, uh, value that. That we also have preferred methods, uh, be it a D C F or a C N R and then also, uh. It values all of those assets, be it, you know, land improvements and personal properties as one unit. Of, of value when we do a value of, uh, of, of a mine or if they're valuing an oil and gas well, it could be an oil and gas well, or if. A company is operating a group of oil and gas wells together and gathering it all together and selling it from one point, they may. It may be a group of oil and gas wells as one whole group of, uh, wells and that's kind of our. Um, where we value them as, as an operating unit. So as I said, we, we have land improvements and personal property that we value, but then when we do our income, our, uh, income valuation, usually. For a good operate, a good operation, we will have a value that's greater than those component pieces. And that's called allocated income. And that's a combination of mineral value and assemblage value. Assemblage is kind of that. The idea that all of these assets working together. Produce even a greater income or, or have greater potential than operating individually. And so that's the thought behind assemblage, so. That's what's represented in allocated income is that mineral, you know, both, uh, mineral value and, and assemblage of all the assets. Some of the factors I've kind of discussed, uh, before, uh, there's pricing and then production, how much are they producing? How much will they, are, did, have they sold in recent years as well as? Um, what does it look like they're going to be able to produce in, in the future? Company expenses, um. And then our cap rate that we work up every year and then, then the assets themselves are, make up a part of that value as well. Here's the historical value of, uh, natural resources. That slide i- is, makes it, while there was a decrease from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. I don't think the baseline is zero there because it makes it look like it dropped three times when it actually dropped from one seventy nine to one fifty. So, and then it's been climbing back up in the last four years there. So, and then it's been climbing back up in the last four years there. And then here's the different, uh, natural resource industries. I could have had you go over this, Joe, sorry, I didn't realize we were combined.
We had mining and oil and gas separated, but they're all combined under natural resources.
So when you go through here and you apply your logic. And you see these appeals that went out in court, uh, do you go back and adjust your methodology of evaluations? So you try to get closer to what the judge expectation is on there, so after you go through that, so Pacific Court. You go through and you hear the appeal and how they were able to basically win the appeal and, um. Get it a lesser value, does the tax commission then come back and, okay, we need to adjust our formulas or whatever the cases? So that you're closer to that result that the judges had seen and that they have worded on? Or do you keep your methodology the same and in anticipation, but knowing mid-core? And all these other entities that continue to appeal, will continue to appeal and and win. Not necessarily that they'll get a hundred percent of of what they appeal. But is there an adjustment in that methodology and that thinking? I know some of what I'd heard originally when I first got here was sometimes the tax commission just gets their valuation wrong. Whether it's formula driven or whatever on the spreadsheet. I just wondered if there's ever a reset that you guys do as a tax commission to try to get to a point where these appeals are no longer. They no longer have a case, it's like, yeah, we're we're seeing the same thing you guys are seeing and X, X is it.
I don't think that we, I don't think we'll ever get to a point where they won't have a case. Because every time an issue is resolved, they they find another issue going on and try to, you know, I mean, that's. That's the reality of it, is they'll they'll be okay with with one of our processes until, you know, we resolve some of these other ones. And then they'll focus on that process that they were okay with. They're just, there's always that, there's always, yeah, the nature is that they're always, they always want a lower value, you know. As far as the decisions go, I think it it's, it kind of depends on, you know. Obviously, a decision that's in Pacific Core will will likely affect future Pacific Core valuations. It may or may not affect other power companies, um, it likely isn't going to affect a relative valuation. Uh, because each each industry is valued fairly differently. I mean, there are cases where, you know, if it's an issue with our our cap rate methodology or something like that, we may adopt some of those ideas. You know, if we can, we're we're trying to get to the best value, you know, what we believe is the fair market value. So if we go through this trial and there's evidence presented that maybe shows us that, well, maybe this is a better way to do it. We're certainly open to to making those changes where we see appropriate, um, but that's not always the case. So it just, it really just depends on the industry, on the company and and on the decision itself, how much of that gets up.
I was gonna say for mining too, we've sometimes seen cases where we might have been handed down a decision. And, uh, we we've said, okay, so we should be applying this methodology on this one point of of our value. For this mine, but for all mines, and and we've been sold, no, it's very specific to that mine. Unless we see more evidence, we don't think that that necessarily applies to other mines, you know, so. Sometimes it it really may de- depend on the decision on how much application that gets to. That property and the future and as well as other properties too, so. It sometimes it it may depend on the decision and and also our thinking on how to apply that as well, so. All right, um, let's see, uh, like I said, our bi- our biggest value here in natural resources is the the oil and gas. And then is green, is that our, I've got my picture here, is that the uranium? Yeah, that's our uranium, and that's, you know, mostly EFR and their plant. Because most of the mines, while there are some some assets there, it's they haven't been operating, so there's not been a lot of value at the mine. But we, it'll be interesting to see in in the next year or two if we see some new investment there. Cause we had heard last year's assessment that some of those, uh, uranium mine operators were wanting to. Get get things up and running possibly this year or the next, I don't know if you've seen any of those mines running. We were just in Garfield County and they were saying the same thing, some of their mines, uranium mines, uh, there was a company wanting to come in and possibly get things going. So we may see some increased, uh, value there as well, okay.
It's too bad those valuations aren't reflective of what's at the pump. You can't tell me they haven't made a profit over five dollars a gallon of gas, and so.
Here's just the value of our natural resource industries just this last year. Uh, just as a point of some of the things that are centrally assessed and locally assessed that you might see in around mines. Um, that we always have to, generally, something that's centrally assessed, any equipment being used at an active mine. Some processing mills, um, and then I, sometimes there may be equipment at mines that haven't operated in several years that we just continue to assess. Uh, even until they reclaim the mine. Sometimes there is some equipment at mine sites that might be locally assessed in that some of the, for example, a sand and gravel pit operator. May also have an excavation or a construction business, and sometimes he keeps some of the equipment on site at his mine. But he generally, we tell a mine operator for particularly for sand and gravel, if they, that if they've got a loader, if it's. Primarily, even though he may occasionally take it off-site to do something other than mining, if it's primarily used in the mine. Report it to us as part of the mine, if it's primarily used for non-mining activities, even if he stores it at the mine. Report that locally, so that's one thing, and then some other things that are locally assessed. That sometimes they're at mine sites and sometimes they're not, um, cement plants or asphalt plants. And I think we have a few cement plants around the county and some of those are located at mine sites, but we do not assess those, so. Those companies should be reporting them to the county. Is it, if a lot of that equipment that that makes up those, uh, cement plant is oftentimes personal property, so that should be getting directly reported to the county.
I have a question, um, did you keep track, um, you know, we have a copper mine, do you guys have records? Are those minerals, I mean, because copper is one of the rare earth minerals and.
We we usually, um, keep track of mines, we'll look at the Doggum site. And sometimes, uh, the county will notify us if there's a new mine in their county and to double check it if if we haven't picked it up as well. Um, but we're trying to keep track of all of those through through Doggum, uh, especially that you're rare earth and stuff.
And also with, um, with the San Juan, um, you know, the mill. Energy fuel, they are producing other rare earth minerals. And so I just want, just, you know, it's just even just to know from year to year.
Yeah, they they will report those to us, uh, some of those mi- minerals that they that they do sell in addition to the uranium. Yeah, um, one one thing too is that sometimes if an if a new, uh, operation is coming up. We usually do not pick it up until, um, in the development stages. So if it's taking a long time to develop, that could potential have potential to be locally assessed until they're up and operating. And removing or selling product from there, uh, we would pick that up, uh. Now, the lean date after they start operating such that they're selling from there too, but usually a brand-new, uh, mine operation. Unless, uh, we may not pick that up until it's it gets up and running, so.
The Lisbon Valley has been going, I mean, it has been up and down, but it has been going good for the last few years and they are spending.
And and that is one thing, if if it's been a mine that historically we have mined, and even though they may have shut down, if we never. If we continued to mine it, at least the assets that were there, um, and then they start building some new plant. Even though it may not be up and running, that's something we would pick up, just because we've always picked them up by historically. But it would be a brand-new operation that has the potential, uh. If it's going to take a year or or over a year, but, uh, just in building up their facilities before they're operating. That would be something maybe initially we're not picking up, yeah. And I'm trying to think, we heard a couple of years ago, I think, uh, maybe from the county, we looked into it, or or maybe it was through the news, there was. I'm trying to think if it was rare earth or a facility out here west, I think of town that was, uh. Oh, yeah, yeah, so if that should ever come up, I don't know in what stages of that, but. Something like that would probably take quite a long time to develop, and while until it's in operation mode and selling material. We would pick it up on the lean date after that, but if it ta- if they started building things and it took a couple of years to get built. It potentially, we wouldn't pick that up until they were up and operating, so it could have potential to be, uh, to be locally assessed. Okay, so now nothing, okay, okay. All right.
So on a sitla, with sitla, where they would have the mineral. There, so that was Eastland, I believe, was sitla land that they were gonna mine to potash. Is the mineral, even though it's not being extracted on a sitla land site, is that still a different valuation on their property value?
It is, um, on leased land, we usually just apply, uh, surface value to the land owner. The mineral value gets assessed to the operator.
Once it's in product.
One, yeah, that's right. Okay, I I've kind of talked about this, personal property, we we assess, uh, mining or natural resource, any personal property reported to us. The same as as locally assessed using the rule thirty-three tables. For wells, most equipment on a well site is, uh, is centrally assessed with a few exceptions maybe. Um, if you ever see drilling rigs in your county, those are not local, essentially assessed. And, uh, there's sometimes some leased equipment at mine or well sites. And those, uh, the leasing company should be reporting those to you, uh, to to for local assessment. And sometimes, uh, if you ever are interested, which, uh, we, I'm trying to think if there's a report in central test. Or we can provide you any leased equipment that's reported to us to see if it's getting reported locally to you as well. Okay, and then and then if you have any questions regarding any specific equipment, we can. We can answer those questions and get an answer from whether from our records or from the taxpayer. Okay, every year, there's, uh, I guess, for the last few years, there's been a personal property exemption amount. I'm not sure if we have any in your county, but I know we have some throughout the state where they have just a small amount of equipment that falls under the exemption. Every year, when we put out our initial county book, s- sometimes if they have an amount, uh, we'll we'll notify the counties. Of which companies and how much value they had if it was under this exemption amount, because just going back to the example. If they also have some locally assessed, uh, personal property that would put them over the exemption, we'll remove the exemption amount from our records. And and not exempt it, so that's that window. The, like I said, I, we may go through a slide on county manager where if somebody in the, whether it's their assessor's office. That might know that, looks at the county book, the the preliminary county book reports. And sees, uh, which companies we have under that exemption amount. And then if you can let us know if the, any of those companies do have locally assessed equipment that would put them over that value. We'll mark that off, well, I mean, we'll remove the exemption. All here was the, just in the county manager and the prelim, like I said, there is this report, preliminary personal property exemption. Uh, I'll just hurry through these slides, it's just some some typical, some of our properties, like I said, this, uh. This is a drill rig, which these are locally assessed, but they're oftentimes coming from out of state. And they may go from county to county, it's whichever county they were in first that caught them, so. Um, I don't know if if you see drill rigs very often in your county, but if you occasionally do, see if they've been caught by anybody. Cause once they're, you know, if they go to another county and you missed them, you know, basically, it's the first county that catches them in their county for that year. That assesses them, if they're from out of state, and most of them are. All right, I'll turn the ti- I'm gonna have Cody talk about utilities and transportation here.
All right, again, my name's Cody Kemp, I'm with the utilities and transportation section, um, I'm actually over railroads and railcar primarily. But I will do my best to explain our section to you. Not a lot of, yeah, unfortunately, there's, there's not a lot out here for that. Or fortunately, cause there's, that's a whole new list of problems when you have their the railroads as well, so. Uh, so we do things a little bit differently in in the utilities and transportation section, uh, the main thing is we do unitary valuation. So what makes that different than, you know, like your locally assessed property or even some of the oil and gas and mining properties? Is we look at the unit as a whole, um, so we're not looking at individual pieces of property that a company owns. We're looking at the company as a whole, so if we're, you know, if we're valuing Pacific Core. We're not looking at, you know, each power pole and, you know, every little piece of property that they have, we're looking at Pacific Core as a company. So that gives us their their system value for the entire company, obviously, we can't tax based on their whole company. Because a lot of their company is located outside of the state, uh, so that from there, that value is then allocated to the state of Utah. And then from there, it's that value is a portion to the individual counties and individual tax areas. Uh, so what is allocation, allocation is just taking the value of the unit and then assigning a portion of that value to the state of Utah. You know, as I just mentioned, Union Pacific wouldn't be happy if we took all of their value, even though they're located throughout twenty-seven states. The United States. Uh, we look at different allocation factors to determine which part of a company should be allocated to Utah. Uh, for airlines, we might look at revenue, ton miles, ground hours, uh, pipelines, we typically look at things like barrel miles. Originating and terminating barrels, cost of lines of pipe, um, electrical, we might look at historic cost or hours. How much production capacity they have, and then for railroads, we typically look at historic costs, revenues and and net operating income. And then what is apportionment, apportionment is just where we break that value out, um, from the Utah value, and then we break it out to the local tax areas. Uh, we look at different factors for that as well, um, generally, it is based on the undepreciated gross costs by tax area as reported. To the division annually, um, railroads and railcars are an exception, that doesn't really apply here. But I guess the key point here is that apportionment does not necessarily depend on value. So we're looking more at the the initial costs that were invested in the area to to determine which portion of that pie. Should be allocated to that area, and it does not always match up with its current value. Um, so it says there, this is one of the reasons why similar properties that are centrally assessed and locally assessed can have different values. Uh, so why do we assess unitary properties, uh, the main reason is this, uh, Utah Supreme Court decision. Basically, it determined that if, basically, the value of the whole is more than the sum of its parts. Um, so if you have, you know, I tend to go to railroads because that's primarily what I do. A piece of track is worth a lot less as a single piece of track than than it is in a national rail system. Um, so there's definitely added value by putting all these assets together. And when you do that, there's there's additional value that's called enhanced value, um, and. The Utah Supreme Court determined that that value is also taxable, so that increases the values by that enhanced number. Uh, we look at regular, um, you know, three types, three ways that we look at value, um, three approaches to value. We look at market approaches, cost approaches and income approaches. Market is rarely used, um, again, unlike with, uh, your home, you know, it's with residential real estate, there's a lot of data available. You can see what your neighbor's house sold for to to determine what your house might be worth. Railroads, power companies, pipelines, aren't changing hands very often, so it's kind of hard to go back to previous sales to determine a value. We do sometimes use, uh, surrogate, which is the the stock and deck, stock and debt method. We do sometimes use uh surrogate, which is the the stock and deck, stock and debt method. Um, that we use, we don't typically put any weight on that approach. We mostly just use that to, as kind of a gauge to see if our other approaches are where they should be. Cost, we typically look at a historic cost less depreciation, um, where it's basically just their accounting. So we'll we'll look at their assets, we'll look at their depreciation and determine a value that way. And then we also use an income approach where we primarily use yield capitalization and discounted cash flows. Here are the five-year historic values for utilities and transportation. Um, you can see that has gone down. Um. Pretty big jump from twenty-two to twenty-three. I think the the main driver of that is there was legislation where we, we used to value telecoms. And then legislation was passed and that was, that was moved on to local.